Good evening. In compliance with Chapter 551 of the Open Meetings Act of the Texas Government Code, I call to order an information session of the Board of Trustees of the Austin School District for Thursday, December 7, 2023 at 6:05 PM. A quorum of the Board is physically present at AISD Central Office to conduct this meeting. This meeting is streamlining live on AISD TV and Apple TV. It's also being broadcast on cable, Channel 22 through Spectrum, Astound Broadband, and on Channel 99 through AT&amp;T U-verse. Closed captioning in English is available on these platforms for individuals who are deaf or hard of hearing. Welcome and thank you for joining us. I'll mention that while our President is here tonight, she's protecting her voice, and I will be presiding over tonight's meeting. Next is an opportunity for the public to share comments with the Board. This time allows speakers to comment publicly on any topic of their choosing. We have time for up to 60 speakers. As a reminder, the district continues to provide time during the regular voting meetings of the Board to hear from the public about agenda items for consideration and vote. This is an opportunity for the Board to take part in active listening. While we wish we could respond or provide feedback, we are required to limit our questions to requests for clarification or follow-up directly to the administration. Members of the public wishing to participate in the public comment portion of our meeting called a dedicated AISD phone line in advance of the meeting to audio-record their remarks. We will now listen to the -- we will now play the recorded messages for public comment, so please listen carefully.
My name is Kyra Matos, and my son Ari Gerhard is an Austin High transfer student currently studying abroad. As educators, I'm sure you're aware of the benefits and impact studying abroad has on a student's education, career, and life, as well as the ways their experience can benefit their school and peers upon return. Ari has worked incredibly hard to be able to have this experience. He has taken extra classes, spent his summer getting ahead of graduation requirements, and maintained a 4.0 or above throughout school. Now, we are learning that rather than be supported by Austin High and the district, Ari likely won't be able to resume classes at Austin High School. Not returning to Austin High would be a major disruption to Ari's education, and since our home school doesn't offer the classes he needs, we would be left to look for options outside the district. And it isn't only students studying abroad that are at risk of losing their transfer status. Students who need to pursue inpatient treatment for mental health issues, who are in foster care, or have parents in the military are also at risk of having their education interrupted. I am hoping that you can see why this policy is not in the best interest of students or the district and helps to make changes to better support our students. Thank you so much.
Hello, this is Dewey Parent Sharon Vane. I really want to thank the trustees and others who raised questions about the calendar options presented to families and the holidays that were and were not originally included. It was great to see that the revised Option B, Calendar With Input, that is being presented tonight includes all the holidays that had previously been observed in this calendar year. I appreciate the committee going back to the drawing board and incorporating the feedback and encourage you to start the process next year by ensuring that these holidays are included in all options that the calendar committee considers. It's an important way to show our families that all are truly included in AISD. Thank you again.
Hi, my name is Dan Oppenheimer. I'm the parent of three kids in AISD schools. I'm calling to ask the Board to look seriously at strengthening the district's policies around the prohibition of use of cell phones in schools. I know that policies allow and I think encourage schools to set limits, but my anecdotal sense is that enforcement is really spotty. And I'll say three quick things in favor of this. One is that the evidence is strong and growing in strength that cell phones are harmful both to learning and to children's mental health. The second is that this is a really low-cost intervention that could lead to real gains in test scores. There's evidence of that. If you even went the most expensive route and bought those fancy yonder pouches for every student in middle and high school, in AISD, it would be only a few million a year. I don't think there's any other intervention that's remotely that cheap that might produce actual tangible test score results. And finally, I think this policy has to be at the district level, but the more you kick it down to lower levels, whether it's principals or teachers, the more likely it is to fall apart over time. I think there's evidence of that, and it's not fair to ask teachers to be the enforcers of an ad hoc policy. Some will succeed, but many won't. I think that's true of principals, too. I think it really has to be at the district level. Thanks. I appreciate any efforts you can put towards this.
Hi, my name is Peter Clark. I'm a parent of two middle school students in AISD. I am calling today to encourage the school district to go further to get cell phones out of the schools. As you know, these phones are a big distraction for kids in terms of listening to teachers, paying attention to their assignments, distracting inside and outside the classroom, distracting from building friendships and having normal conversations. There are also cases where social media leads to fights and other issues on campuses. As a first step, let's at least make sure teachers are not inadvertently pushing kids to get cell phones, smartphones, and bring them to school for using QR codes or other assignments. I appreciate your consideration. Thank you very much.
My name is Dana Stoffer, and I'm the parent of two students in AISD. I'm calling today to urge the Board to consider a district-wide ban on student cellphone use during the school day. Cell phones are an enormous problem, not only in the distraction they cause during instructional periods, but also in that they discourage students from talking to one another in social periods. A district-wide ban would bring a huge culture shift that would yield tremendously positive results. Our students deserve the opportunity to develop friendships and focus without the constant presence of social media. Research shows that the students that cellphone bans help the most are the students who struggle the most. So then, in addition to being a good idea for all students, a cellphone ban is a step towards greater equity. I would urge the Board to learn about the different approaches to cellphone bans and to consider what a serious problem cellphone bans are, cell phones are in our schools, and what a tremendous benefit a ban could be to the AISD community. Thank you.
My name is Kyra Matos, and my son--
This concludes our public comment. Trustees, are there any questions for clarification? Trustee Boswell?
Yes, I'd love to clarify the transfer policy about students who leave campus, not because they've decided to return to a home school, but because there is something happening in their educational kind of career, like studying abroad, or as the caller said, if you were in an inpatient mental health facility, I can see a situation where a student may have a parent who was ill or incarcerated, left to stay with a grandparent, and came back. Whether we have considered a policy that in some circumstances would allow us, you know, support a student to return to the school that's been their home, kind of before and after that disruption.
Okay. Trustee Boswell, I can get with the team and provide a kind of a clear, concise response as to kind of what the current protocol is, is it aligned with policy, and, you know, what opportunities may exist, and provide that to the Board via Board Update. That's okay?
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Trustee Zapata?
Interim Superintendent, several calls about banning cell phones. We have a po-- we have a current policy, is that correct? Can you--
Yes, Trustee Zapata, Policy F N C E does lay out, you know, kind of the current kind of approach to cell phones. It is one of the, I guess, based on the feedback we received from the callers, I think it's -- there are questions around implementation and how it's being implemented throughout the district. I think I'd want to understand more about how different schools are applying the policy. You know, but I also have heard this from other constituents as a possible area of improvement.
Okay. Thank you.
So I'll say to the public as a reminder, you can share any general comments or questions with the Board by email at trustees@austinisd.org. And we'll move on to the President's report and start with a note of gratitude to the Austin Association of Public School Administrators. When we came into the room, we were greeted with a whole shelf of beautiful poinsettias. So thank you to ABSSO. Earlier this week, the Board took part in Board Monitoring Training as part of their work with Lone Star Governance through the TEA Approved Order. We'll continue that work tonight as we discuss a temporary retooled scorecard, Board Monitoring Calendar, and Board Monitoring Process during our discussion items. Starting in January, the Board will start a new process on monitoring scorecard and student goals based on the Lone Star Governance process. Tonight at 5:00 PM, moving on, the Board closed the job opportunity posting for the superintendent position. The Board will discuss any applications received tonight during executive session. If the Board has a final candidate, we plan on discussing the item next week during our regular voting meeting and may name a lone finalist for the position of superintendent. Once named, the Board will need to wait 21 days until they can approve a contract with the lone finalist. You can find additional information about the superintendent's search process on our Tonight, we also want to recognize that tonight starts the celebration of Hanukkah, which will continue for eight days and nights. The holiday is celebrated by the lighting of candles on a menorah each night. There are multiple public menorah lightings happening in our community tonight and this week. The Board wishes a joyous holiday to our students and families and all those who celebrate this holiday. Finally, on a more somber note, we want to acknowledge the horrific incidents that occurred this Tuesday in Austin and potentially San Antonio, including how it came to our campuses at Northeast Early College High School and International High School. More than 1,200 students and staff were kept safe and secure while our officers and officers from other local municipalities actively investigated the incident. This was only possible with the leadership of Austin ISD Police in partnership with local, state, and federal law enforcement agencies. Due to this ongoing cooperation, the suspect was arrested Tuesday night. The Austin ISD Board wants to specifically share our thanks to Austin ISD Police Sergeant Val Barnes, who sustained non-life-threatening injuries. Sergeant Barnes has been with the district for 29 years and served as an SRO and a sergeant. He's now recovering at home and stable. We appreciate Sergeant Barnes and all he does for Austin's kids and community. We'll now move to our information reports and updates. The administration prepared a video presentation, which can be viewed on YouTube using the link in the agenda item, or by viewing the video file attached to tonight's agenda item. We've scheduled 30 minutes for tonight's discussion. Mrs. Segura, would you please introduce the item?
Thank you, Vice President Foster. Tonight, we have Eduardo Ramos, Senior Chief Financial Officer, to answer any questions you may have around Scorecard Goals 15 and 16, fiscal stewardship for our public. As Vice President Foster said, this is a recorded video presentation that is available prior to the meeting and can be found in our Board documents that are available online. And Mr. Ramos is here to answer any questions that the Board may have.
Trustees, are there any questions for Mr. Ramos?
I think just a comment.
Trustee Boswell?
Yes, I just want to share real thanks to you and the team and everyone who is responsible for just these really strong reports, that we have a AAA bond rating, which allows us to borrow at a cost that keeps that low to our taxpayers and our community to do the work that we're doing to modernize our facilities, to maintain our facilities, and reduce those costs. And just thank you as well for the first rating, the state's rating, and just really want to call out, even if we don't have questions, I think it's really important to state publicly the strong financial position and the responsibility with which you lead this work, and really appreciate that.
Thank you. Trustee Whitley Chu?
Yeah, and I just want to direct people to trustee questions that were submitted, and they are in the agenda as a backup document. And I really want to thank trustee Boswell and trustee Singh for your questions were really, a lot of the ones I had about, you know, are the, you know, are, why we choose to pay or recapture payment early sometimes and why we don't, and the thoughtfulness behind that. And so just, yeah, really appreciate your work, and this is a way that the community, that our meetings can be shorter, and the community can find the answers they want to their questions. So thank you for your time in answering those really well.
Thank you. Trustees, any other comments or questions? I want to take credit for running a snappy meeting. But I will say in greater seriousness to our community that you do have the video presentation available for you on Board Docs, and as part of the backup materials on Board Docs, you will have, as trustee Whitley Chu mentioned, questions that have been asked ahead of time. So this is part of our establishing a sort of new cadence to our meeting. So it's a bit odd to call you up, and here you are, ready to go, but it's not for lack of preparedness that we don't have a lot of conversation now, and we do invite the community's ongoing questions and feedback. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed.
So we can move on to Item 4.2, which is the Board Member Handbook. We want to thank trustees Hunter, Whitley Chu, Boswell, and Singh for taking part in a work group in preparing a draft handbook for our consideration. The handbook, or Board Operating Procedures, will define the district's mission, vision, and values, serve as a guide to key governing documents, such as the latest district scorecard, and identify conditions and expectations for effective governance that will allow the improvement of student outcomes for all students while adhering to the community's visions and values. We've scheduled 30 minutes for tonight's discussion, and we'll continue the discussion next week if needed before voting on December 14. So I'll invite trustee Boswell to provide a brief overview of what makes up the proposed handbook.
Yes, happy to share. Thank you. And really want to thank trustees Whitley Chu and Hunter for doing the heavy lifting on getting this draft together and the research that you started with and really looking at lots of models out there and bringing this to us. And then everyone for having the conversation that we had, including our Lone Star Governance Coach Ashley Paz, for really talking about this on Monday in really thoughtful ways during our retreat as well. The headlines, I'm just going to run through the headlines so you have a sense of what this is. It's a little bit like Cliff's Notes for our policies and procedures. It's not a full detail of all of our policies, nor is it a full detail of all of the Texas Education Code duties and powers, nor is it a full exposition of our practices, but it's a little bit of all of those things, intended to make that just really clear for people who want to understand how the Board operates, including not just trustees, but also our community. So the first section is just a brief how-to-use-the-Board handbook. That's followed by a district overview, including our mission, vision, and values, and our scorecard. The third section is powers and duties of the school board that defines a body corporate. And then we're working to take the statutory powers and duties and turn them into something a little more concise and friendly. We also have specific guidance and guardrails for trustees. That's a section that is intended to just address a lot of things that come up often. One, our guidelines for communicating with the media, for not directing staff. That is not our role. Our role is governance, and we have one employee, not thousands of employees. A section about visiting campuses and protocols for that. A section about the training we are required to do as trustees, and the travel that often is involved with that. We have a section about eight characteristics of an effective school board. That's one of the documents that's a foundation for a lot of different training models, including Lone Star Governance, and something that we had been talking about from the moment the newly-elected, you know, now a year-old elected members joined our Board, and some principles we've been discussing. Next session is about Board Officers, how they're selected and what their responsibilities are. The next is about Board Committees, Board Self-Evaluation, how we review our own work and take a look at how we're doing the work of governing and hold ourselves accountable and accountable to each other. One is for, the next section is about setting the Board Agenda, including development and timelines, and how our consent agenda works, and the requirements for posting. The next section is about Code of Ethics and Conflicts of Interest, and that includes some statutory requirements and our local policies. The next section is about Board Member Information Requests and clarifies not just the Texas Education Code, but also local requirements and practices. The next is Board Member Support and Concerns. That's really addressing how, if there is conflict within the Board, the first line says, "Open communication and conflict resolution are the hallmarks of an effective Board," and really details what our policies, practices, and values are around that. So that's what we're working with.
So I'll invite our trustees for any comments, questions, conversation regarding Trustee Boswell?
So I think the one thing we know is that this is a work in progress. We won't have, this isn't precisely what we'll be voting on, that this is one of the requirements of our agreement with TEA and the monitoring agreement, and so we'll be working to make sure over the next week that what we have meets the requirements that are expected and reflects kind of everything that needs to be in there. So it's a work in progress, and just want to make sure that that, people are aware of that as well.
So I'll offer a note of gratitude as well to the Subcommittee that's been doing this ongoing work, and of course, to the entire Board, as we met for several hours the other day, walking through this document that is now being, I guess, preliminarily shared with the public. So it sounds like we can move on. Item 4.3 is the Retoold Scorecard and Board Monitoring Calendar. The trustees started this work in November, and will utilize the retooled scorecard for January to July 2024 as we take part in the Lone Star Governance Monitoring Discussions as part of the TEA Approved Order. Scorecard is based on the previous scorecard already in place. The Board is also committed to developing a long-term scorecard based on community values this upcoming spring, and we will begin that conversation in March. For tonight, we've scheduled 45 minutes for discussion. Before we open it to trustees, we'd like to invite Dr. Jacob Reach, who's been supporting the Board with this scorecard, if he could provide an overview of the scorecard and the changes as compared to the previous document. Dr. Reach?
Thank you so much, Board of Trustees, interim Superintendent Segura. So I want to take us through just kind of a brief summary of this scorecard and how it compared to our previous scorecard. What I have up here, I'm not going to read through these, but what I have on the left are the previous student-focused goals on our scorecard, and on the right, the retooled scorecard goals. You'll notice on the left that some of those are in bold, and the reason is, is because those goals in one form or another have been carried over to the retooled scorecard. So these also include what we typically refer to, and the state refers to, as HB3 goals. So those are goals on third grade numeracy and literacy and CCMR. Some of the changes that I want to highlight is, of course, that this is now three goals just aligned with HB3 and aligned with the LSG process. And in alignment with that LSG process, the goals are based off of all students, and then looking at 10 student groups. Now, the next slide, I actually have all those written out. Goal, our new Goal 1 and 2 clarifies that we are looking at the assessment in English or Spanish. It's a question that we've typically discussed every time we present it, and we want to make sure that we understand the importance of students taking it in English or Spanish, depending on their need. Goal 3 is focused on the criteria that makes up the CCMR bonus. Our earlier language was actually written as students who meet the criteria for the CCMR bonus. But in order to provide more clarity to that, you now see it written out to where it's students who meet the TSI criteria on TSIA, ACT, or SAT, and then also earn one of those second steps, which is our certification, a Level 2 Certification Associate's Degree. So there is no corresponding goal for Goal 1 and 3, but as a reminder, this is just a retooled scorecard for a six-month period to get us from January to June, while we work on the requirements under LSG. So looking at some of our constraints, we had quite a few constraints, so I did not write all of them up here, but we previously had 13 different goals that LSG would typically refer to as a constraint, but on our old scorecard, they were goals. We have changed those into five different constraints, and then we've created constraint progress measures under each one of those. All of those constraints, with the exception of the financial constraints, which I also have to acknowledge Mr. Ramos just presented tonight, are still found on the scorecard. However, I'll mention that even though the financial ones are not there, we would not have presented them during that six-month period anyway, so it would not be something that we had reported on. One other thing that I'll mention is that our previous Goal 6, which was about continuing in a coherent sequence in your high school level, has been split into two different progress measures instead of just being the one it was previously. So now there is one just based on a coherent sequence of CTE, and another based on a coherent sequence in fine arts, visual arts, or athletics. It is, of course, possible that a student could show up in both of those categories. I mentioned that our previous Goals 17 through 19 were removed. The other thing that I'll mention is that all of our previous goals in our old scorecard were typically written towards a single student group. As I mentioned, under the LSG process, they look at the all-student group, and then the 10 student groups that make up the all-student group that the state typically reports on. One thing that we wanted to do to really make sure that we were targeting where the greatest need was, was ensuring that we were taking steps to monitor economically disadvantaged, Black economically disadvantaged, Hispanic economically disadvantaged. At the same time, the other category that we typically called out, special education, which is on those groups, and also something that we've discussed quite a bit but was never spelled out on our old scorecard, emergent bilingual. So for all of our constraints, while you'll see the targets as all of those 10 different student groups, we've actually added, which were not part of the requirements, right at the top, our need to also look at Black economically disadvantaged and Hispanic economically disadvantaged. So on the scorecard that's attached to the document, you'll actually see that highlighted out on there. So over on the right side, you can see all of those groups that we will look at to monitor. One thing that I will mention, and we'll look at this on the next slide, is recognizing that, one, special education is an area of significant need for Austin ISD, and, two, the approved order from TEA was focused on special education. We will look for Goal 1 and 2, which are those third-grade goals, to actually report out on special education separately. So when we come to do our monitoring, we'll do the all-student groups, and while sped will still be listed on the chart because we need to report on all 10, we won't go into depth for special education. But we will go into depth on economically disadvantaged, especially Black and Hispanic, and emergent bilingual. When we are looking at Goal 1 and 2, we will then come back, and let's go ahead and look at our monitoring calendar, and monitor just on third-grade reading and third-grade math for special education. And then we will disaggregate special education out as part of that monitoring, so that we're looking at Hispanic, African-American, Asian-American, and all the different student groups just under sped. So this last chart is looking at our monitoring calendar for six months, and you can kind of see that we have it by month, and there's two different rows included in each month. So for the most part, what that means is the first one would be what we currently call our Board Information Session, and the second would be the regular voting meeting. Most of these are scheduled based off of two things. One, understanding that the approved order requires that we meet 50% focused on student outcomes. And you'll also notice that I have some items on here that are highlighted in green. So any of those items in green count towards our student outcome minutes. Typically, it would just be the items under Goal Monitoring, but TEA, under that approved order, also clarified that any discussion that we have on special education and special education monitoring would also count towards that. And then the other thing that you'll notice, for instance, in April, in May, we have the scorecard discussion and the budget workshop. So similar to this discussion now, developing that scorecard also counts towards that time. So similar to this discussion now, developing that scorecard also counts towards that time. And then this board has also discussed making a commitment in our budget workshop to see how we're tying our budget workshop to our student outcome goals. And once we do that, that also counts towards those minutes. So you can see that even though sped evaluations under guardrail monitoring, those still count. In May, we will actually have our special education auditor, Stetson, come give a final report to the board. And as a requirement under the approved order, that would also count for us. And then, of course, we'll do our end-of-the-year sped evaluations as well. The other items on there under the, the guardrail monitorings are those constraints. So we'll be presenting on three of the other constraints and then all of our scorecard items on there. As I mentioned, the split up January with the reading and math, and then sped in February, and then in March, we want to split up our CCMR. So we'd like to spend our first monitoring session talking about the TSI criteria, including TSIA, ACT, and SAT. And then we want to talk on the other meeting about our dual credit, our IBCs, our certifications, and our associate's degrees so that we can have two really focused conversations on what makes up CCMR. So I mentioned that the number one thing that we looked at was the 50%. The other is, when is data available? And recognizing that many of our students will be taking our middle of the year, all the way up to when we go on break, we want to ensure that we are able to really look into that data and create a good monitoring report. So in January, and this is just unique for January, we would actually present two in the same meeting. But typically, as you can see, we want to try to just do one goal card, goal monitoring session per meeting. So that's an overview of our retooled scorecard. And I'll pause there. I'm happy to take any questions or take notes on any thoughts or feedback that the board has.
Thank you for that. And I'll invite comments or questions from the board. And if there's not a really active discussion, I'll probably go to the trustee questions and responses and point to some of the folks who asked questions previous to the meeting. So to begin, are there any questions? Or trustee Singh, should I be following the procedure of going down the line?
Follow the procedure.
All right. So that puts on the spot, all the way down to my right, the left on, from the audience, trustee Gonzalez.
I don't have any questions at this time. Thank you.
Trustee Kaufman.
None at this time. Thank you.
Trustee Hunter.
Thank you. Thank you for the update on the new retooled scorecard. I do have a question when it comes to our different categories. You mentioned that we'll be looking at the all category. Can you state again? Because I heard you say all category, but then you listed out the 10-plus. We're going to be doing some more, just one more time for me.
Of course. So previously, when you looked at our scorecard, they were written towards a certain student group, mostly economically disadvantaged. But some of our progress measures were Hispanic economically disadvantaged, African-American economically disadvantaged, and/or special education. Same with our disciplinary items. Because LSG looks at the all-student group and then looks at all the difference, the, the major student groups that make up that student group, as long as you have, I hope I say this correctly, it's either 15 or more, or 30 or more. I apologize if, I think it's 15 or more, that's what I'm going to say. Then you report out on those individual groups. And so that's the 10 that's economically disadvantaged, emergent bilingual, special education, American Indian, Asian, black, Hispanic, Pacific Islander, two or more, or white. Recognizing that this board has really made it a priority to look at some of those groups that have been historically underrepresented and where we really need to put extra support, we've actually moved up economically disadvantaged on this chart to show its significance for us on focusing on that group. And also added black economically disadvantaged and Hispanic economically disadvantaged. So that's not a requirement of LSG. That's something that we've added.
Excellent. Thank you. And then this is just going to carry us through until the spring, and then the community will have time for input on that new scorecard.
That's correct. So this will be in place through June, but starting in March, this board will start a discussion on that new scorecard, including our focus on student groups and our focus on targets.
Thank you.
Trustee Singh.
I've saved my voice so I can make comment on this. So thank you. Isn't he doing a great job? Way better than me. So thank you, Dr. Reach. I'm wondering if you can actually pull up the, the new scorecard.
Would you like to see the template one or the one with draft data in it?
Draft data, please.
I apologize. Thought I could get there quickly.
Okay. Thank you. So I just wanted to emphasize some of the changes that Dr. Reach had mentioned. At first glance, it might seem like we have not emphasized special education in the same way that it is on our existing scorecard that we have. But I do want to assure folks that we, as a board, what we have on our current scorecard is not necessarily L S, Lone Star Governance compliant. And, but at the same time, we want to make sure that we are closely tracking our students who are receiving special education services. Obviously, that's an important, really important to us. And so I do want to just note that it is there. And it is one of the categories that we're talking about. And so we're going to be looking at that very closely. And in fact, the administration is going to have a whole separate presentation for us to discuss the outcomes for our students in special education. So I just wanted to really just make that super clear. We haven't forgotten about it. It will still be emphasized, and we will be spending as much or probably more time talking about that group of students. I also want to mention, excuse me, I want to thank the administration for goal progress measure 1.1 and 1.2. You'll notice that they added the black eco-dis, so our African-American students who are economically disadvantaged and our Hispanic students who are economically disadvantaged. That preserves the two goal progress monitors that we had in our current existing scorecard. And we wanted to make sure that we continue to emphasize those groups because that is where our data shows we have a large, you know, room, a lot of room to grow. And we want to make sure that the students groups don't get lost. So, so that is there. That was not in a previous version of this. So I just want to, a previous draft of the retooled scorecard, I should say. So I really appreciate that. The one thing that is missing from here that is, like altogether, I would say, from our current scorecard is the six through eight star performance. Again, that was not LSG compliant. Because we can't have test scores spanning multiple grades or multiple subjects as one of our scorecard goals. So it's not in there. But I guess I would like to just ask the administration to, please, if you can, if you have that data and can just maybe share that with us in a simplified report, if there is interest from the board. I don't, don't do that just because I'm asking for it, but since we have been tracking that and, and since middle school math is one of the biggest challenge areas from that. So I don't think it should be in the, in the retooled scorecard. But I'm just wondering if there's interest in my fellow trustees to still get a report on that information, a written report, like as part of an update.
President Singh, we'd be happy to do that. I mean, one of the things that we've been talking about is that this is one tool that we have, but certainly, you know, not the only tool that we have to ensure that our students are progressing. So not only can we share it with the board, but we can also provide that and post it online and make sure that it's accessible to whoever would like to review it.
I appreciate that.
I think for us, it'd just be making sure that we align it with when we receive the data, making sure that we run through the analytics and then provide, you know, an approach that is similar to what you would receive here and, you know, a full presentation.
Thank you. The other thing I wanted to just bring to light is, if you don't mind, Dr. Reach pulling up the board monitoring calendar one more time. So this is super helpful. And I just really wanted to call out the budget workshop. I'm really excited about seeing that as something that's going to be tied to student outcomes. And I think it might be helpful as we lead up to that, if there are opportunities for the board to meet with, you know, I know that we, even before that, it's just super helpful to talk with you and with Chief Ramos to really think about like what that might look like. Because I don't think we've really necessarily done it before where we're anchoring that discussion in student outcomes. So we probably want to have some conversation about what that might look like. And if you have ideas, I'd be curious to, to hear. Or we can do that another time.
President Singh, I think, I love the opportunity to identify what would work with this board, what would work, you know, given kind of the parameters we have to work within, brainstorm, and then, you know, bring something forward and see how that might work. But yeah, we see it as an opportunity. I think at this point, it's just making sure that we approach the right way so we know that we stay compliant.
Thank you. I appreciate that. The other thing I wanted to ask, and I mentioned this to you like offline, but the other thing that we, I don't see prominently in here, maybe it is here, but I think it would be useful to have updates on just our, what you're doing with special education. I know you've had a few vague submissions to TEA. I think our public is probably really interested in hearing about some of that work and the plans that you've done. So I guess I'm just wondering if there is a way that we could, like how you might envision sharing some of those with us and adding that to the monitoring calendar.
So President Singh, you know, there is a tremendous amount of work that's occurring as we continue to work around the special education initiative as well as ensuring that we're meeting all of the goals laid out in order. And so certainly, we can report on that multiple times a month. I think, you know, one of the things that we would want to balance out, as we discussed, is, you know, how much time do we allocate? Because we are submitting deliverables almost every two weeks. And so I think, you know, for, for us, I'm not sure if it, we can definitely commit to having that calendar. I don't know if it actually, maybe it's in our column, and we talk about the fact that it would show up in information session and then following a board meeting, preserving space within the agenda to talk about it. I think it's all we really need to do. I think that'd be fine.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And then the other, the last thing I wanted to mention was the board monitoring reports. And we did get some really good training on that on Monday with our Lone Star Governance coach. I just wanted to share that, you know, as we continue this process of, of improving the way we talk about student out, excuse me, student outcomes, what are some of the strategies that maybe the, the administration is thinking about to, to help us in this process? And what support, what further support might you need from the board?
So, you know, we've been talking about this for, for quite some time, kind of anticipating this moment. So, you know, we have built up a couple of different templates, you know, making sure that the presentations and the monitoring reports that you receive are consistent, they meet the expectations of the board. And, and so one of the things that we've talked about is actually producing an example or an exemplar monitoring report based on a previous report that you've seen, right? So you can see kind of what was presented several months ago. Now take that information, use it in an updated template, one that kind of meets my expectations, and then provide that via board update, get feedback from the trustees. And my expectation, expectation would be that it align with LSG, with the work session and training we just went through with Ashley, who would align with kind of our expectations regarding data quality. And then we would get feedback from the board, refine it, and then have it ready to go, you know, in January. So I think we're pretty close now that we had that training with, with Ashley earlier this week to provide something in a board update, perhaps as early as next week, to get feedback from the board to see if that meets the expectation. But that's how we would, we intend and are planning to tackle that.
Great. Thank you. Look forward to that. And just so folks know, excuse me, starting, I guess in January, the board is going to resume its practice of, of voting to accept or not the board monitoring report. So no pressure, Superintendent Segura. But I, no pressure. But, but I think the communication has been very open and seamless. So I'm sure you guys will do an amazing job. But just wanted to let folks know, if you're like, why are they voting on it? It's because that's one of the ways that we, you know, we formally acknowledge that the board monitoring reports kind of provide the information that, that we have agreed upon. So thank you.
Trustee Boswell.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Reach. I would love to go back to the draft scorecard that's filled in with the, the goals. And I'd love to go to goal three. Thank you. And, and really just want to kind of talk and ask some questions about, President Singh was speaking about the monitoring reports and how those will change as well. And I think something that we've talked about in our workshops and in our work, our Lone Star Governance work, is the requirement that our monitoring reports really look at root causes of how we're getting there. And I know that's something that this board has been hungry for and something that I know we've been talking with Superintendent Segura about as well, just kind of understanding the why. The why is very important to understanding the what and then to making a plan for making these improvements. And really want to look at, under goal three, I think we can see the data show from 2021, you know, things falling in this area, people who are earning these certificates and that these are four-year kind of long-term investments. And, and just wondering if this, if we could look at goal progress measure 3.2, for example, under here, students who earn at least 12 college hours. And I think we're, we're probably seeing the impact of the pandemic there. And just, you know, kind of just as a preview, is this the, a clear example of the kind of root causes we'll be discussing in terms of understanding what has happened in our data and then having those really rich conversations about what we do collectively about it?
Yeah, I really do believe that that's what we want to look at when trying to understand how do we increase this opportunity for students. And so I think that there are probably a lot of reasons on why some of these went down, but I think that the pandemic, recognizing that for a year and a half, most students were working from home. And we know that one thing that occurred during that time is that students may not have taken as many of those secondary courses outside of those core courses. We know that many students with their coherent sequence, which is something that we look at on our constraints, that you can see prior to that time, we had really strong coherent sequences. And then the students who were juniors, seniors during that time did not have as strong. And so that's something, you know, with many of these, that this isn't just a one-year thing. If we don't start with the students honestly in middle school, but at a minimum in ninth grade, we're not going to be able to complete this the way we want. Very few students are going to be able to earn 12 college credit hours in one year. They need to start that their freshman year, unless they're in the early college, high school program. Same with the industry-based certifications on 3.3. Students are not, for the most part, are not going to be able to decide their junior year, I want to do that. They need to do it their freshman year. And then we need to ensure also on our part that we're continuing to offer them all of those steps. those steps. While I think it's never intentional, we have all heard from families who say, my student can't finish X, you know, that next level for them is not there. So ensuring that we do have strong built-out pathways, and I know that our CTE team is working really hard on that. And then, of course, as I said, building it into middle school. I think that when we report on something like this, you're going to hear a lot about what we're doing in middle school to help prepare these students before they get to ninth grade. I don't want to say it's too late by the time they're at ninth grade, but it almost is.
Good. Thank you for that. I'm really excited to be able to start having these questions. Did you have some to add?
Yeah, Trustee Boswell, I think one of the things that I appreciate about this conversation is that it's going to allow us to have this rich conversation, right? Identify the root causes, identify initiatives, build plans that align with the goals in those initiatives. And then as we talk about what we're doing, you should see that reflected in the plan. And what we all know is that a system this large, it takes time to implement many of these initiatives. And so it'll help communicate and show kind of a journey as we address this root cause, right? I mean, that's really what we're trying to do at the end of the day. And I think this process will allow us to align what we're doing with the initiatives, with the goals, which is something that I think we've struggled to do in the past.
I appreciate that. And then just to contrast with that, I think looking at the data, and I'm not going to quiz anyone about root cause, because I know we're not monitoring these progress, but I think it's when you go to 3.4, GPM 3.4, and it's a one-year measure, it's, you know, what's happening, it's a more current measure, you know, that doesn't require that four-year longitudinal, we're seeing some really bright spots. And so I'm really excited to have these measures under each category and really be able to look at, you know, continue looking at disaggregated data, continue to look at our progress over time and across groups and in so many different ways, and really start having those deeper conversations about, about what has led us here and what will lead us to something much better for our students. So, thank you.
Trustee Sapata.
No questions.
Trustee Whitely Chu.
No questions.
So I'm not, and I understand that we're retooling and we're trying to ensure that we have the complex and robust representation of the data that will allow us to sort of get to things like root causes. And as we've had to move away from having discrete categories, and then, you know, African-American, Hispanic, Ecodis, emerging bilingual, et cetera, and then sort of move them into another place, I just want to ensure that we retain a sort of elegance and coherence into why we're doing what we're doing. And I've discovered constraint progress measure. And I don't think I fully get the idea of a constraint progress measure. Can someone talk to me a little bit about that to help me understand? Because it seems to be that that's the place where we are putting in our discrete categories, where we want to, say, eliminate a discrepancy here or there. We put it in as a constraint and then measured progress against the constraint. Can, can you help me, Dr. Rech?
Sure. Mr. Segura?
Yeah, I'm happy to help to the extent that I can. This is terminology that does come from Lone Star Governance. As I mentioned, our earlier scorecard called all of these things goals. You know, our six through 19 on our old scorecard are, were goals. Under here, they are these constraint progress measures. And to trying to do the best that I can to explain an LSG process, they look at creating a constraint. So things that you don't want to happen, and that you're saying you will not do these things. And then how do you progress measure again to say, well, if these things are done successfully, then that is some level of evidence that we're not doing what we don't want to do. So not saying that this is the most elegant wording, but looking at constraint one, you see the superintendent shall not prevent students from pursuing coherent pathways outside of core courses. And of course, you know, having a little humor to it, I don't think that we're ever going to see Mr. Segura like stopping students at the door and be like, you can't come into this CTE classroom. And so I don't know that, you know, we'll actually be doing what the constraint says. But the point of it is, is that we want to ensure that students have a wide variety of options and that they're pursuing options that interest them. And one way that we discuss to measure that is a student taking multiple courses, especially at the 11th and 12th grade year, of, of something outside of a core course. And we believe that students who have, who have found things that really interest them and excite them, that they have better attendance, that they're more, no, I'm just going to describe attendance, they're more likely to come every day, and that they're more engaged in what's going on in their learning. And so that's why we believe a coherent sequence like this is something that really tells us that whole student focus that we want, that that's being accomplished. The way that LSG writes that is through a constraint.
I appreciate that. And part of what I can appreciate is that I think, no, I know that we and the state share similar goals in terms of student achievement, share similar goals in terms of kids emerging college-ready. And so if this turns out, you know, if what we've discovered is a way to do this, to represent our data in a way that still allows us to work towards root causes, then I think we're on a good path, even though I would offer that this is beyond inelegant as a representation, constraint progress measure. I understand what we're talking about. And so I can retool my brain to accept a phrase of three words that don't particularly make sense together. What's interesting about constraint progress measures is the only place I've found it so far is in other ISDs under LSG. So this seems to be an LSG thing. But if I go to business management, or if I go to the person who came up with theories of constraints and how to respond to them, this does not map elegantly to that body of research. But I am heartened to know, or to have a sense that we all have the same goals, even as we are following a prescription to get there that looks a little interesting. I'd also, I'd love some, I guess, a little bit of discussion on the idea of these discrete categories, like African-American, Hispanic, Ecodis, whatever, and the value or lack of value of bringing those together to say, or I guess, help me understand why we talk about African-American, all students, African-American students, African-American Ecodis. What is the value in parsing out the data in those ways?
Yeah. Well, I think one of the values is that when we disaggregate looking at our data, and we try and see where the students that we need to ensure that as a district we are better supporting, and using an outcome measure to help us understand that, we see clear gaps. So the one that I've pulled up here is third-grade MAP on grade level. And you can see that our all students is 33. You know, obviously, we like to see that higher as well. But there's a clear difference between our white students, which is down at the bottom at 57%, and our economically disadvantaged at 12. And then even when we look at our economically disadvantaged, we see black economically disadvantaged is at 6. So it's actually half of what our overall economically disadvantaged is. Likewise, you can see sped at 14, very similar to economically disadvantaged. So I think if we're being honest, as a district, we may not be serving those students well. What are those things that we can do? And what do we need to focus on to better serve those students? And so by calling it out, we're not only ensuring that we're focusing on all students, that all students are getting a quality education, but then we're also saying, hey, these groups are very important to us, and we have not done enough to support them. Let's really focus and monitor that as well to ensure, you know, that we are doing more to support their students. We know that if those student groups go up, especially when we think of the economically disadvantaged make up half of our students, all students is going to go up. Sped, who makes up 13%, I think there may be a little bit even higher than that, when their results go up, our all students will go up. And so that really helps us focus on where do we need to put our, our resources? Where do we need to put the most support?
I deeply appreciate that. And when it comes to meaningful data, I'm sure that the, all of the trustees are interested in more data, not less, as long as it's sort of cogently and thoughtfully prepared, as you all consistently do. I do think that we, what I'm hearing is that we learn something when we see the data parsed out in a different way, so that that will help us get to root causes. So if we see that African-American students as a whole are performing thusly, but then when we take African-American Ecodis, what we find is something. But then when you take those data and compare that to all students versus Ecodis, and you see disparities, you get to another layer of complexity in the data. And it will help us get to, well, is our teacher training the issue here? Or is this the issue? Or is that the issue? Or is it regional or whatever? So I see value in this and appreciate all efforts you all can come up with to continue to present the data in all its sometimes ugliness, but all of its complexity, so that we can really effectively monitor. Just simple all-student data without complexity is not going to be enough for us to understand the challenge. It's just, it's just not. And I think we're all aligned on that, board members and administration. I guess I'll just offer that I appreciate that one thing that's happened out of the processes related to coming up with new scorecards and following a new system of, or a new approach to governance, is that it's really forced to look at what our values are, and really forced us to think through our procedures. And one of the things that's happening is our procedures are, they're certainly becoming, well, we're becoming quicker in our cadence as this meeting demonstrates, and some good things are happening. And I remain steadfast that we're going to have to be vigilant, that we don't lose some of the things that our community is absolutely demanding as we move forward. So for instance, if a certain population is only now 6.6% of the district, we, we could pass them up, never look at them, and look like we're doing a great job. And what we've committed to is continually parsing out the data. And even if it's not reflected in a high-level goal, we are still making sure that emergent bilinguals are taken care of. We're still making sure that what sped students or whoever are taken care of. So I appreciate y'all's report. I'll give one more opportunity in round for any follow-up questions, and then we'll move on to the next item.
Trustee Kaufman?
Yes, please.
Thank you. So, Dr. Rech, I just wanted to clarify, and Mr. Matias, that we, in thinking of the timeline for going from the retooled scorecard to the new and improved scorecard that, that engages the community in establishing what our priorities and values are, what would, what is the timeline to when a new scorecard would be leading this work?
Yeah. So on our current calendar, looking at some of our LSG deliverables that also include our scorecard, we're currently considering that this board will take part in a goal-setting and constraints workshop at the beginning of March. That would be before we go on spring break. And that, at that workshop, you will discuss some of the things that you just mentioned today. What is some of that outreach that we need to do? Who are the groups we need to speak with? Who do we need at the table with us? Why we work through this? That will lead us to developing some type of timeline that will certainly take us into April. And currently, where we have it, is that there would be some non-board meeting, but still board-led community conversations to talk about what's important for a scorecard. And then at the April, yeah, the April Board Information Session, it would be scheduled as an item, just like what we're doing now, so that we can have that public conversation and really accomplish two things. One, it'll accomplish letting the public know what we've heard, what we've seen, and where we're kind of going to. But also, since trustees cannot converse with each other outside on business, outside of a duly-called meeting, this will provide you the opportunity to converse with your colleagues on, here's what I'm hearing, and here's what I'm hearing, and here's how we can build on that. So we'll do that at the April Board Meeting. If we feel that we're ready, we could vote on that at the April Voting Meeting. If we're not, we looked at this purposefully to make sure that we had May set up to do that. So that then we would come back in May and allow either more discussion or a vote. I do think that it's important that we have a scorecard before we end the year, because we want to make sure that our campuses know what's going to be the expectation for next year. We don't want to catch teachers and principals why they're off during the summer, and then they come back and say, hey, it's all brand-new. Here it is on day one. So while April is probably that, that best spot, we are prepared for May if needed, in having that as time to vote. So we'd be looking at one and a half to two and a half month process.
Okay. Thank you. And, I mean, one thing I think is important that we discussed, I'd love to hear Mr. Segura's comments on this, is just around how, how this retooled scorecard, but more importantly, the next-generation scorecard, will actually facilitate achieving goals rather than simply setting goals. And I think we've talked about how there are ways to set the goals and to do a monitoring process that will actually empower district staff and people to achieve the goals. And I just would like to share with the public a little bit what, what your thoughts are on, on just a, you know, high level, how could this be different? Because I see this as a good thing that we're doing this.
Oh, Trustee Kaufman, I think it's, that exercise that we're going to go through in the spring together, I think is going to be hugely impactful. You know, I think that as an administration, you know, we identify initiatives, we spend resources, we, you know, try to align the work to meet the expectations of the board and our community, you know, and, and it's, it's challenging because these initiatives take time, right? And, and we recognize that there's a sense of urgency around many of these things, because those are real students that are, that we're not supporting to the best of our ability. And so what I really appreciate about what we're about to go through together is, you know, we're going to have goals that are set by the board. The administration will bring forward growth progress measures. Those growth progress measures will be thoughtful. They'll be ones that, you know, I think meet the expectations of our community, but those will help inform our initiatives. And initiatives are 18, 24-month, 36-month, you know, plans. And so as we present to y'all in monitoring reports, you'll be able to see, not only that we understand the data, and we understand the root cause, but we also understand the process that we're going to go through together to move the work, and that it doesn't happen overnight. But you'll see all the tasks along the way, and you'll see us meet those tasks. And so I think that'll help kind of weave all this together in a way that it really hasn't been in the past. And I think that'll help let the community know, our staff know, and certainly, you know, the board know, that, you know, we have, we can do this and we can get through it together, and it's all aligned. So that's what I'm looking for. And I think that's how that helps inform the work.
Yeah, thank you. And yeah, I'm very excited about that, because I do think that that will move, that, I'm very optimistic that that's really going to help us to achieve the goals that we have for our students and move things forward. So thank you.
Well, and just, Trustee Kaufman, to put one finer point on it, you know, when we have these monitoring reports, we always talk about, well, what are we doing? Or what are we doing next? Well, we should know what we're doing. We should know that well in advance. And you should have evidence of us doing that work. And I think because it'll be that alignment with the work, we can present to you, hey, you know, this, this part of the work is a two-month process. This is how we're monitoring it. This is where we are in it. And we have real data to support, you know, kind of that fact. And so I think it'll help communicate the commitment to the work and getting it done, which can be challenging at times.
Awesome. Thank you. And then one other, I guess, comment leading into a question is that when you look at even this retooled scorecard, it's still, it does not reflect, it does not look like it's a scorecard of a district with 30% of its students emergent bilingual, that's committed to a dual-language program, that is culturally and linguistically sustaining for our students, because there's very little in there that would either be a goal nor a constraint regarding that. So I just want to, I guess, ask a question which would reassure our community who has been asking for this for years, that this process, even though this retooled scorecard does not yet reflect that, that the process for generating community input into setting the next scorecard will give voice to the community members who have been asking for that, and that we will find, you know, if it's part of the, if one of the priorities that rises to the top, it will find its way into the next scorecard by, by this spring.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That was a yes, Dr. Rech?
Yeah, that was, I didn't know what else I could add.
Yes, Trustee Kaufman.
Yes.
If you just say three more words, then it won't count as a yes or no question, please. So, yes, definitely, or something.
please. So, yes, definitely, or something.
All right. I'll thank the trustees for the conversation. And I guess, just remind us all of something that many of us are acutely aware of, which is that even a brief conversation on the dais reflects dozens, if not hundreds, of hours of work, of staff, of the superintendent, of trustees even. And with all the information that's presented in all cases, there will be video presentations, there will be information on board docs, so that a community watching a brief presentation can go dig deeper through information that is available on the AISD website. With that, I'll offer that this ends the section of, on the information reports from the administration. And so, at this time, we will move into the preview of upcoming regular board agendas. This will allow the public and trustees the opportunity to review the agenda items that will be considered for vote at the next regular board meeting. AISD staff is available to answer any questions from tonight's preview. We'll begin with item six, which is the agenda preview for upcoming academic and curriculum items. Trustees, are there any questions on these items? And I should mention, the administration has prepared a short overview of the 24-25 calendar, if there are any questions on the proposed item. All right. Thank you. The next item, or the next is Section Six, Board Administration. Trustees, any questions on these items? They are Appointment to the Board of Directors of the Travis Central Appraisal District, District Scorecard and Monitoring, an Agenda Item Calendar, and Adoption of Board Member Handbook. Any questions? Trustee? No questions? Trustee Kaufman?
I just want to make sure I'm cut up. The, when I checked this item earlier, it didn't have the name included, but does the updated agenda item have the name on the agenda of the appointee to the appraisal district?
For the public?
For anybody?
Dr. Reach?
Trustee Kaufman, thank you. To give kind of a timeline with this item, Austin AISD has two and a half appointments to TCAD, the Travis County Appraisal District. We were notified at the beginning of, first, let me answer your question. You're correct. There is not a name up there. Now, to kind of give some context to it. So, we have two and a half appointments. We had an appointment that originally we expected to continue on. That individual decided late in November, or close to late of November, that they were not going to continue, so we needed to start the process. We have been reviewing applications, and we had a small group of trustees who have completed review. And we do have a suggested person, but we have not yet reached out to that person. So, once we do, we will make sure that that name is public.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on item seven, 7.1, 7.2, 7.3? All right, Section Eight is Business and Finance. Tax Year, 8.1 is Tax Year 2023 Tax Levy. 8.2 is Monthly Financial Reports for October 23. Any questions? Moving on to item nine, or Section Nine, Facilities, Approve of Fee-Simple Sale to, you know what, 9.1, 9.2, 9.3? Any questions?
Trustee Whitely Chu.
Yes. Superintendent Segura, could you give us a, give the community a brief overview of this partnership between the City of Austin and Austin AISD, and how it will benefit our community?
Absolutely. I'll ask Jeremy Strifler to please come up as well. But one of the things that we endeavored to do over the last many months is to put a process together that would help us identify real estate assets that were not going to be used for any future educational purpose. And so, you'd be surprised how many different assets, you know, parcels of land AISD owns. And so, we brought forward a process to evaluate that and make a recommendation. And so, these are three of those. The partnership with the City of Austin is one that's very, very strong. And what we try to do is to identify opportunities for community-based, like, you know, opportunities, for lack of a better word. And these are sales to PARD, to do two things. One is to provide green space adjacent to waterways, creeks, really spaces that can't be improved but are part of the 100-year or 500-year floodplain. And the other is to provide adjacent open space for, you know, public use. And so, that's what these are. Jeremy, feel free to weigh in. But it's one of those partnerships that allows us to kind of look at resources like this to make them available to the entire community. Anything you'd like to add?
No, thank you. I would just emphasize again, this is land that is not developable for us to use for education purposes. It's along the creekways, trails, et cetera. So, this is helping PARD make further connections for the communities around our schools to have access to open space and amenities.
Well, thank you very much to Superintendent Segura, and to Mr. Strifler, and to everyone at the City of Austin, to working together on these win-win situations. So, thank you.
So, really quick, I have an important question, Mr. Jeremy. I've been reading, we've met several times, and I've been reading and saying your name, and I don't know if I'm reading it or saying it correctly. Strifler or Streifler?
Strifler.
Strifler. All right. I will never get it wrong again.
Strong R.
Strong R. Thank you.
I won. I'll tell you who I beat later.
Thank you so much. Item 10 is Human Resources. There's 10.1, 10.2, 10.3 on the agenda as it appears on board docs. There's also the possibility of an item related to the superintendent's search and naming a sole finalist. Are there any questions with item 10, or with Section 10? Moving on to the Agenda Preview Policy, 11.1, 11.2, 11.3. Any questions? And the next section is Section 12 Other, which includes some interlocal agreements, well, several interlocal agreements. Any questions on 12? This is a really interesting way to conduct our board meetings.
That's true. But item 12, I think, looks like an exciting partnership. Can we get a brief overview for our community of how this will benefit our students?
Mr. Segura?
Is, Ed, would you like to, I know you're on it, but I can't, I don't see where, I can't see past Jacob. Is Dr., Dr. Gloria Williams, will you be able to provide an overview over the partnership for gen. items 12.1?
12.1.
12.1. Leaps?
Leaps, yep.
We'll provide, we'll get, we'll share that. Yeah, I don't, I know it's under Ed's, but I know Ed wasn't the person who brought that forward.
All right. So, this concludes our regular, did I miss anybody, trustees? All right, this ends our regular agenda preview. So, we're now able to recess the open meeting at 7:24 PM and move into executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.074, .072, .073, .087, 551.076, .0821, and .071. When we're finished with executive session, we will briefly return to the open session to formally adjourn the meeting. The adjournment will be recorded and be included in all replays of tonight's meeting. Thank you for joining us, and have a wonderful evening from 7:25 on. We will now reconvene the open meeting at 12:24 PM. Secretary Boswell, do I have a motion to adj-
AM.
AM? Yes, 12:24 AM. Secretary Boswell, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Having a motion by Secretary Boswell and a second by trustee Hunter to adjourn. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion passes unanimously with a vote of us. All those on the dais in favor, we are now adjourned.
At.
At.
12:24.
12:24.
AM.
AM.